Three, four. One, two, three, four.
It doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Check one, two, three. Check one, two, one, two.
Seven o'clock on May 3rd, and I hereby declare town meeting open. This is our annual town meeting. My name is Gary Horowitz. I'm the deputy moderator. My address is 41 Lowell Drive here in Stowe. As you know, we have a zero quorum here for Stowe Town Meeting so that we can get started on time. We have a select group of town meeting members here this evening. More people may show up as we get started, but we're going to start the business of town meeting. So, Mike, are you ready to... Okay, so some logistics to start with. Let me first thank Mike Kupchinsky, who's put everything together for our AV program tonight, which is extremely helpful and requires a lot more work than people understand, but it helps town meeting run very smoothly. And there's just as much work to do, no matter how many people come. So every annual town meeting and every special town meeting requires a lot of work, and so I personally want to call attention to Mike's work and thank him for it. So some logistics about the auditorium, for those of you who are not familiar with it. The emergency exits are at the rear of the auditorium, and there's another exit here at the front to my left. The restrooms are in the back, the women's room to the left, the men's room to the right. We have no scheduled breaks this evening. There are no... There's no food or beverages allowed in the auditorium, so please try to abide by that rule. And there's absolutely no smoking on school property. Indoors or out, is that correct, Mr. King? Right, excellent. Okay, Mike, the next slide, please. You all should have gotten a voter card, a registration card, when you signed in. Again, the reason for these cards are twofold. First, to allow you into the auditorium, and second, it helps when we need show of hands votes, because sometimes we have non-voters in the auditorium. So this is what we count, not the number of hands. Please do not transfer your card to somebody else. It defeats the whole purpose of having those cards. And the next slide. I think we're okay on tellers, is that right? Yes. We need tellers in case there's a vote which requires that we need to count the votes by hand. And so I appreciate those people who have volunteered to be tellers this evening, and I appreciate Linda's work in arranging for all of that beforehand. Everybody sworn in as well? Wow, that's efficiency. So we're all set to go on that. I wanted to call everyone's attention to the fact that when we adjourn this town meeting, it will be to the town election next Tuesday, May 11th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I won't bother to read all of the positions that are being voted on at the election, but they're at the back of your warrant in the last article. They're on the town website, and they're listed there as well. So remember, the business of annual town meeting is not done until we have the election next Tuesday. Town meeting is being recorded by Stowe TV. At the beginning of town meeting before we started, there was a list of public service announcements. Some of you may not have gotten to see all of them, so let me briefly read down the list Tonight, for those of you who haven't yet gotten your H1N1 flu vaccine, it is available here tonight from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. in the nurse's office. So I encourage people who have not yet gotten the H1N1 flu vaccine to take advantage of that opportunity. This coming Saturday, we have Operation Paper Shred hosted by the Boy Scouts. That will take place from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Hale School. The comment period for the master plan has been extended to May 13th. You can submit those to the email address, I think it was planning@stowe.gov. On that same evening, the Board of Health is hosting a talk on Lyme disease prevention. That will be at Hale from 7:00 to 8:30. Very important event occurs in the middle of the month, 5/14, May 14 through 16th, Stowe Spring Fest. Few more words about that later, but it should be on your calendars already, and at the back of your warrant, there's some advertising for it. So hopefully people will be able to participate. On the 19th, Neshoba Regional School District has a recognition of retirees, 5:30 p.m. at Neshoba. The annual Memorial Day Parade will be on Monday, May 31st. People should gather who want to participate in the parade, 1:30 at Center School. Groundbreaking on the new elementary school is scheduled for 10:00 a.m. at Center School on June 17th. There will be attire collection hosted by the Board of Health on June 19th at the Highway Barn from 9:00 to 1:00. And hazardous waste collection, again sponsored by the Board of Health, in October. October 23rd is the date that's been selected. So there's a lot going on in town, but back to the business of town meeting. If I could ask everyone to rise for the invocation, I'd appreciate it. Before we start the business of this annual town meeting, let us commence, as has long been our custom, by standing and remaining silent for a moment. Let each of us reflect on how, through this town meeting, we and our neighbors provide for our common good. As we deliberate and vote tonight, let us be reminded that the passions of the moment are not always the best guide for our conduct in the future, and that if sacrificed by a few is required, the sacrifice should be only where the common goal is worthy of that sacrifice. Let us approach each issue, no matter how divisive, with an open heart and with an open mind. And above all, let each of us maintain a saving sense of humor, so that the debates at this town meeting will not be a source of division among us when our business here is finished. And now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. So I want to emphasize one other thing at the beginning of the meeting. Many of you have seen this slide before, but it's worth mentioning and reading, I think. It's about the opportunity of volunteering in the town. To many, serving the town politically is a distasteful, discouraging, degrading potential experience. In higher levels of government, this possibility certainly exists. However, our form of government is simplistically sound and honest, and serving the town of Stowe is an enlightening and rewarding experience. Once again, we solicit those who wish to give of themselves for the good of all to come forward and join in guidance and perpetuation of our community. You will quickly find that Stowe is unique among its 350 neighbors, and we are proud of it. That was written by the Board of Selectmen from the town of Stowe, 1978, and I think they're words that still ring true. We don't have a listing of all the openings here to go through tonight, but there are several, and they are available on the town's website. And again, I don't get any money promoting this, but the town website is pretty incredible thing. They've done an amazing job. As someone who comes from a hospital that prides itself, I think erroneously, on a fantastic website, I think they could learn a few things from the town of Stowe. There's a lot of good information there, it's updated frequently, and so the opportunities that currently exist are there, and as things change, they'll be updated there as well. So I encourage all of you to... Who have time available to participate by volunteering for one of the committees. And the committees are very welcoming. If you don't think you know a lot about the town, you can learn a lot by participating as a volunteer. Okay, along those lines, I would like to draw attention to people who were major contributors as volunteers to the town over the course of their lives, who have passed away in the last year. I will read the names, but you can see, many of you probably know these people or knew these people, some of their accomplishments. There were so many that we couldn't fit them all on the slide, but some of their accomplishments for the town of Stowe are listed there. Newell Dearborn, Kimberly Doty, Mary Ellen Kinsley, Donald Hyde, George Scraggs, and Edward Newman, all of whom passed away this year. So I think a moment of silence is probably in order. Thank you. Okay. We can move on to the next slides. Some etiquette and rules before we get into the beginning of the business of the meeting. I want to make sure everyone knows that there is a town meeting handbook. Here we go. Again, this is available online, so you can print it out and read it yourself. For those of you that are new to town meeting, let me ask now, how many people have never been to a town meeting before? We're all veterans, it sounds like. But even if you are experienced, actually, one of the things I do before town meeting, maybe especially as moderator, is I read through this, because all the important points about rules of order and how we conduct town meeting are in here. It's really a wonderful document. It's important to try not to interrupt the flow of the meeting, so I learned this from a friend. If you have a cellphone or a pager... I'm doing mine now. Put it on vibrate, please, and that way you won't interrupt town meeting. Thank you. Applause, not for points of view, but for recognition, if we want to recognize somebody's accomplishments, but otherwise applause is out of order. Any handouts for tonight's meeting should be at the voter information table at the back of the room. People can pick them up there. They should be clearly identified as to the source of the information and which article they're about. We're going to try to enforce tonight the policy of, if you plan to make an amendment or would like to make an amendment, we need you to fill out this amendment form. This is not just because we're trying to be difficult. This is to enable the town council to have a chance to make sure it's a valid amendment and is an order legally, as well as to give the town clerk an opportunity to make sure we record it exactly the way you intended it. If you need some more time to fill it out, let us know, and we'll give you that time. But we really do need you to fill out a form if you plan to make an amendment. These are located in the back of the room. In the front and in the cafeteria. They're blue, so they're pretty easy to recognize. And lastly, there will be no photos taken during a vote, whether it's by flash photography, still photography, or video. Your votes are your own. What are my expectations? Respectful debate. Address your comments or questions to me as the moderator, and I will redirect them appropriately. We have a tradition of three minutes per comment or one question. It must relate to the motion being discussed. Try to avoid being repetitive. At 30-minute intervals, if a discussion goes that long, we have a tradition that the Board of Selectmen will make a motion to call the question. This, again, is in an effort to move town meeting along. What that means is that we will take a vote... It has to be seconded, and then we take a vote. It takes two-thirds to call the question and move on to the vote. So if two-thirds of the voters want to stop debate, they can, but every 30 minutes during the course of a motion, we will do that. And at 10 o'clock, we will see if we want to adjourn to a second session or whether we think we can finish this evening. And on the next slide. I thought I'd just repeat something. It was two years ago that I ran the annual town meeting, and my associate Liz Painter ran annual town meeting last year, and I hope to do as well as she did last year. But I dredged up some things I wrote for town meeting, and I thought I'd repeat them here. You know, sometimes people forget what town meeting is all about. It really is a very unique form of government, pretty much localized to the New England states, where every registered voter is allowed to speak and vote, unencumbered by any intermediaries. But we don't have to go through a representative or a senator. You know, anybody who wants can come to town meeting and speak his mind and sway other voters and cast his vote, and it's something we should cherish, but we, of course, take it for granted, because that's the way we've grown up. Well, that's the way many of you have grown up, but actually, I grew up in New York, where there's nothing like this. So the notion that you have some control over your own destiny in town is really quite something, and I cherish it. So don't take it for granted. It's something we would like to keep going. I also would like to say a couple words about the moderator. This is right from the book that we use to run town meeting called Town Meeting Times, and although I don't expect a lot of controversy tonight, one never knows, in nuclear physics, the term moderator is used to describe the substance which is mixed with uranium in a reactor to slow down the high-speed particles... That's you. ...to the point where they can do some useful work. So it's okay to be passionate about whatever it is you're passionate about, and my job is to try to be the moderator and make sure we get some useful work done here tonight. So in that vein, my opinion about any article does not mean anything. My job here tonight is to make sure that the collective will of town meeting comes out. So it doesn't matter what I think, my job is to make sure we get to find out what the majority of you think. So I think that's useful to keep in mind. We need to approve, if you're not a member of the town, a voting member of Stowe, those people need to have the permission of the voting members of the town of Stowe to participate in tonight's meeting. And we have five individuals here that I'd like your permission to have participate. Three of them are employees of the town. Bill Wrigley, the town administrator, up here in the front. John Witten, over here on my left, at the end of the table, town council. And Mike McLaughlin, I can't see, he's in the back, the fire chief. In addition, from the Minuteman Regional School District, we have Dr. Ed Bukilien and Carney Lamika. I hope I didn't butcher the name too much. So all those in favor of allowing those five individuals to speak with us this evening, please raise your voter cards, and that is unanimous. Thank you. I want to explain one other thing. In the very near future, we're going to get to the consent calendar. And the consent calendar was invented and introduced to the town of Stowe as another means of moving town meeting along. The entire explanation of it is on page 47. These are motions that typically pass without much controversy each year. They come back year after year after year, and so rather than having a motion, a second, a discussion, and then a vote, we are going to vote on all of them as one group, only if there are no questions or comments about individual articles. So if you haven't already done so in the time you've had with your warrant or before the beginning of this town meeting, please look through articles 6 through 37 to see if there are any there that you have questions about. When we get to that article in a little while, I will go through them one by one and ask if there are any questions. And if there are, we will take them out and deal with them as we used to, one at a time, but the rest of them we will deal with as a group. Are there any questions about that? Okay. That's what the motion will look like. We'll just move a whole series of articles at once. We'll come back to that later. Okay. I think it's time for the first motion. Mr. Dungan.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the reading of the warrant and return of the constable thereon be waived but made a part of the record of this meeting, and that the moderator be permitted to refer to each article by subject matter instead of reading each article in its entirety.
Your second? All those in favor of not having to read each article in the warrant, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. I think we're ready for article number one. Let me explain one other thing. We're going to refer to articles and to motions. Articles are what are printed in the warrant to apprise you of the business of the meeting, but when we move the actual... When a motion is actually made, it may be more explicit about the funding, or the dollar amount may have changed. I'll try to point that out when that's an issue, but you'll hear us talk about articles, and then I'll ask for a motion. So I think we're on article one or article two? Article one.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the members of the Board of Selectmen be elected to serve as field drivers for the ensuing year.
How many people in the audience know what a field driver is? Wow, these are veterans. For the rest of us, can someone explain? We should make this a consent calendar.
I believe we're responsible for checking the boundaries of the town.
And how are those boundaries?
Field drivers, we take care of the stray cows.
How many stray cows did you take care of this year?
I think it was either 10 or 12, I'm not sure.
Now you know why I second the motion.
All right. All those in favor of the members of the Board of Selectmen serving as field drivers...
Gary, I did get one horse, too.
Yeah, you can come clean here. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That, too, passes unanimously. Article two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the reports of the Selectmen and other town officers, boards, committees, and commissions be accepted as printed in the town reports of 2008 and 2009.
Second? You have second, okay. Any questions about that? No? Hearing or seeing, and seeing none. All those in favor? Please raise your cards. All those opposed? That, too, passes unanimously. And I think Selectman Sturgis was trying to show you this document, the Town of Stowe report. It's an annual report. My wife collects them every year. Do I have the wrong one? Oh, eight and nine, wow. I only picked up nine. Oh my goodness. So these are available throughout town, right? So all the committees write reports about what happened in the previous year, town meetings recorded here, so these are excellent documents to be able to... And it's on the website as well. We're not sure if we have any special reports, but just in case, I will entertain a motion about special committee reports.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the reports of the special committees be accepted as printed in the town reports for 2008 and 2009.
All those in favor? All those opposed? That passes unanimously as well. Which brings us to article... Well, before we get to article four, excuse me, I think we have a report from the Finance Committee? Is that correct? And for that report, Mr. Sarno will deliver the overview from the Finance Committee, some of which is, again, in the warrant, but much better to hear it live from Mr. Sarno.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Can we turn down the lights in the front so... Can everybody see this? Who cannot see that pretty well in the back? Anybody? All right, go ahead.
Good evening. I will attempt to give you a little bit of an overview of the Stowe fiscal year 2011 budget along with the town's overall financial condition. Despite the economic storm that surrounds us and the upcoming Center School project, the town is in relatively good fiscal shape. It should be noted that a lot of work has been put into this budget by the town administrator and the various town departments, along with the schools. For the fifth year in a row, the town's operating budget does not require Proposition 2.5 override. It's a pretty good streak. On the municipal side, the budget has no reductions in town services or staff, also no new staff. The town's cost of living increases were only partially funded this year to the tune of 2% versus in the prior year it was 3%. So the slide does indicate no reductions in staff. That's not entirely true. At Neshoba, there is a minor reduction in staff, and Minuteman also has a significant restructuring, which I will get into a little more later. Stowe will also not require any new debt to fund this budget or capital articles, and will be utilizing a limited amount of free cash, only $200,000, which is consistent with the previous year. Overall, our revenue growth is projected to be about 4.7%, 4.8%. It's slightly deceiving in that the community preservation sort of acts as a pass-through. In other words, if we took that out, really, revenue is only slated to increase about 3.4%. And I'll talk a little more about the community preservation account later. Free cash up there at the bottom, that represents our use of stored assets, and the other line item just above free cash represents carryover articles and transfers from other funds. The big revenue sources are obviously property taxes, and to a lesser, much lesser degree, local receipts and state aid. Of the 4.5% increase in property tax revenue, I believe less than 2% is from new growth, which is down from previous years, but actually not quite as bad as some neighboring towns. As can be imagined, we're forecasting lower new growth this year, which, from the economy, makes a good amount of sense. Local receipts, which include a number of things, but is predominantly the excise tax associated with automobiles, we're also forecasting a decrease here of about 5%. As can be imagined, you know, when people don't buy new cars, this revenue source suffers The state aid number... The state aid, it shows a 4% decrease. This is slightly deceiving in that within our state aid number, the $900,000 is about $500,000 associated with the Hale debt from a while ago, and that's locked in, that doesn't change. If you take that out, state aid to the municipality actually decreases by about 9%. And this... And this budget, by the way, also does not account for the state aid to the schools, which come into the Stowe budget net in the assessment, and I'll talk about that in a So as you can see, our revenue sources are predominantly property tax. And again, if you take out the CPC, property tax really accounts for about 90% of our revenue sources. And of that, about 92% is from residential. So, and I believe the business portion of that has actually shown some decreases over the last few years. And this right here represents the spending side of the budget, or the expense side. As you can see, our largest component is education. And for this year, we're actually forecasting a pretty flat budget, modest 1% increase or .64%. There's a slight reduction in education costs. Actually, overall, education will go down 2%. A lot of that is attributed to a large restructuring at Minuteman. Municipal growth of about 2.7%, and that largely includes the smaller, or the reduced cost of living increase. And with this spending, we're forecasting about a surplus of about 4%, which is for about $1 million, which is not a bad surplus to have, especially when there's a lot of unknowns, especially around local receipts and state aid. And then, so let me actually talk a little more about the Neshoba aspect of the budget. So that's our assessment amount. So the total Neshoba budget, I believe, is around the $40 million range, somewhere around there. And that's basically Stowe's portion. And it's net of the state aid, net of other revenue sources Neshoba receives. Right now, in their budget, they're forecasting a 5% reduction in state aid. And it does actually include staff reduction. They're reducing it by, I believe, seven instructional aids of the, or six of the 77 instructional aids. And it also is relying on some excess and deficiency fund usage, which is not necessarily unheard of during a recessionary period. Minuteman actually has a pretty significant restructuring in that their overall budget across all 16 towns is actually being reduced by over 7%. We got, our decrease is slightly higher, largely just because of the assessment to the Town of Stowe, which is based on the number of kids, the type of kids and whatnot that comes in there. So we actually get a good benefit there. Special articles, that's basically a lot of the individual stuff that you'll be voting on tonight, most of which, I believe, are in the consent calendar. The debt service of $1.3 million, consistent with the prior year, but as many of you know and you'll see in a minute, that'll go up in a hurry, and the reason is center. Community preservation, that I'll talk a little bit about in a minute, but basically only about $30,000 of that is really operational expenses. The rest are projects we actually vote on at various town meetings. And the tax recap items of about $850,000, that represents about $250,000 allowance for, I believe, tax abatements and exempt status. And, but the largest portion, about $500,000 of that is the retirement charges for our municipal employees, which in past years have gone up pretty significantly. This year, we were fortunate enough to only have a 4% increase. So based on that, this graph here hasn't changed much from the previous year. This basically shows where our money's going. 61% to education, the school districts, actually. Public safety accounts for 9%. That's largely the fire department and the police department. Public works, largely highway-related expenses, that's about 4% of our budget. And then all the other municipal departments make up about 10%. Debt service at 5.7%, that's not a bad percentage to have, but like I said, that's going to go up in a hurry. And retirement and MBTA, that's the tax recap stuff, that's about 4%. Here are the, in that budget, by the way, there was, there's our capital projects. There's about $400,000 or $380,000 in capital projects this year. Largely speaking, there's, well, you can kind of break them up into three categories. There's vehicle replacements, which includes a truck for the Highway Department, $80,000 truck. It includes a new police cruiser for the Police Department, as well as a new command vehicle for the Fire Department. Then there's sort of our angle roof expenses, or roof repair expenses. This year, I think it's about $90,000 if you take the Highway Department and the library together. There's other costs in the library which are associated with the leaky roof, basically. There's also $33,000 for an upgrade to the Hail baseball field, and $39,000 for basically a down payment for a radio system upgrade for the Fire Department. Of all these amounts, we're not going to require any new debt for this, which is a good thing. They're basically going to be funded by the $200,000 use of free cash as well as the tax levy. So getting back to the CPC funds, the budget amount was 578, $28,000 was their operational expense. The other $550,000 was actually an item we voted on at this past October special town meeting, and that's basically one of the installment payments associated with the land purchase for the Pilot Grove and Plantation Apartment expansions. And by the way, the CPC funds do not directly affect your tax rate. They're basically funded from a surcharge as well as some matching funds from the state. Here's the projected debt service schedule, so you can see, obviously, '08 through 2010 were known, and then fiscal year 2011 and through fiscal year 2015 are projected. The fiscal year 2011 is pretty well-known in that is the debt associated with the Center School expansion, which will increase our total debt service pretty significantly. Right now, like I said, it was about $1.3 million, but we're projecting about $1.5 million a year in debt service associated with Center. So that'll increase it up to, I guess, about $3.8 million. Is that right? No, $2.8, sorry. So basically, Center alone will actually represent about 59% of our debt service. The other thing to keep in mind is, we don't know what interest rates we're going to be bonding at for the big, long-term bond. That's unknown. In here, we're actually using a 5% interest rate, which is very high for today's interest rates. But right now, I think, I think the question is no longer will interest rates go up, but by how much? And so I think 5% is a pretty prudent number, but again, and interest rates can change in a hurry, as we know. So one of the fortunate things that happened this past year is that Stowe got a bond rating upgrade. And a bond rating is basically like the town's credit score, which greatly, which is probably the biggest determining factor on the cost of our debt. And so anytime we get an upgrade, that's a very good thing. It reduces basically the town's cost of doing business. The bond rating upgrade was basically thanks to the diligent work of our town administrator and the other town departments, and it was also reflective of five years of no Prop 2.5 overrides, lowering liabilities, lowering debt amounts, as well as increased stored assets. Those are all good things that the rating agencies like, and fortunately, it helped us. And right now, with that bond rating upgrade, that could end up saving us as much as about maybe $60,000 in 2014 on the debt service of Center alone, and maybe as much as $1 million over the life of that debt, so it's not insignificant. Stored assets basically represents the good side of our balance sheet, our cash and what we have to spend. It basically includes two accounts, free cash and stabilization fund. Free cash is much more available, much more easily spent than the stabilization fund, but as you can see, it's been increasing steadily, and that's definitely helped us, especially in the bond rating. It's now about 5% of our budget, which is a number I think we haven't seen in a while, and which is a good number to have, but, you know, we'd still like to see it go up even further. It'll be a difficult and challenging thing to do, especially in the coming years, but it'll be a prudent thing to do. So the other thing to keep in mind is that, basically, our tax rate is actually set by what we decide here. The tax rate does not determine the spending, the spending determines the tax rate. So, you know, that's the important thing to keep in mind whenever you're voting on anything, is that, you know, that is, that could affect my tax rate. The other thing to keep in mind, too, that I know the assessors always have to deal with, is that, you know, in periods of home price declines, that doesn't necessarily mean if the value of your home declines by 10%, your taxes are going to decline by 10%. It just means your tax rate per $1,000 of value of your home has also gone up to sort of match the tax amount. So to sort of sum it up, the short-term forecast is actually pretty good. We have a budget increase of less than 1%. We have a surplus that should be able to handle any sort of unforeseen things that happen during the year, which, as we know from last year, could happen. And the town's sources of income right now are actually pretty relatively stable. I think a lot of that is due to the fact that 90% of our revenue comes from property taxes, and 92% of that comes from residential property taxes, which residential property taxes tend to be more stable than business property taxes during a period of recession. So that's sort of one of the reasons why we're in pretty good shape compared to other Long-term, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us. Who knows on when the state aid cuts stop? Who knows when local receipts are going to make, you know, start rebounding? There's also a lot of challenging things coming up for both the schools and the town. There's the Center expansion coming up, which is basically all amount to, I think, the debt service on Center amounts to about 6% of this budget alone, which is a pretty significant number. And so we're going to have to start absorbing that. The bulk of the expenses will come on in about 2013 or 2014, and that'll be a big increase. The other thing, the other thing with Neshoba is they're in a negotiating year with a contract. We don't know where we're going to come out from that. They are using excess and deficiency funds this year, which may not be available, or we may not want to use them next year. So there's a lot of unknowns there. And Minuteman is also going through some pretty significant changes. They're in the process of getting a building upgrade, a badly overdue building upgrade, but they're also in the process of redrafting the regional agreement of which the assessments, which basically determines the assessments of their 16-member towns. That's sort of a daunting task for them, but probably something that's also overdue. So between the economy and everything else, we're actually doing really well, I think, on the short-term basis, but there's a ton of unknowns on a long-term basis. I think a lot of credit has to be given to the town employees, and particularly the town administrator, for driving the process on this budget, which started a long time back, and, you know, I think the message was sent that we need to have a pretty level budget, and I think we have one here. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can recognize... Nice summary. Mike, I realize I made a mistake. I didn't introduce everybody. So can we go back to the consent, the cast of characters? I take full responsibility for that. I know you're all veterans, but I still would make sure, I want to make sure we introduce all the people up front here, some of whom have already spoken. Some of them I know. So I am the deputy moderator, which you all voted on last year at town meeting, annual town meeting. Liz Painter is here in the front row next to Mike. She is the assistant moderator. The town clerk, we've talked about earlier, Linda Hathaway. And the assistant town clerk next to Linda is Kay Desmond. We have the Board of Selectmen, and Steve Dungan is the current chair of the Board of Selectmen, Kathleen Farrell. They're raising their hands to help me out so I don't have to know my right from my left. Tom Roggero, the guy who found the horses earlier, Laura Spear, and Ellen Sturgis. Susan McLaughlin's in the front over here. She helps the Town of Select, the Board of Selectmen do their work. Town Administrator Bill Wrigley has been referred to in the white shirt, and John Witton, I referred to earlier, Town Council. And the Finance Committee at the front, Charles Kern is the current chair, Gary Burnclo, Jim Salvi, Chris Sarno, and David Walrath. Ann DeLudie is an associate member, and Beth Toby is their administrative assistant. So we will introduce the other committees as their articles come up later during the meeting, but I wanted to make sure we got back to that. So I think we're now ready to address Article four. Do we have a motion on Article four from the Selectmen?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Article 11 of the general bylaws of the town... Read the right article.
Yep.
...of the Town Personnel Administration by deleting from Section 20H the existing salary schedules A, B, C, D, and E, and inserting in place thereof new schedules A, B, C, D, and E as printed in the warrant.
Second? Okay, I heard a second. Do we have discussion on the motion on the floor? This is on page, pages 11 through 14 in your warrant. These are the new wage levels for all of the town employees. Are there any questions about these new wages? I see someone coming to the microphone.
Hi, Judy 2, Parvart Road. I have a question.
Please.
I think it will be more transparent to the people at town meeting if we showed that these are not the actual figures that people receive as their salaries, because there are 15 employees in town who get another $85,000 split among them, which is sort of hidden in another article. And I also like to say that although the 2% COLA may be less than planned, Social Security recipients are getting no cost of living adjustment.
Mr. Wrigley, can you shed any light on that comment?
I'm uncertain as to the intent of the first part of the question. Do you... Hidden salary components?
Incentive plan.
Oh, the incentive plan. The educational incentive plan applies only to 18 individuals. Those 18 individuals, and it does appear in a special article later in the warrant, specifies a certain amount. We have a 5%, 10%, and 15% educational incentive plan. For those of you who have been here for many years, this originated back when the police were looking for the Quinn bill, which, I won't bore you with the details, I think we all know what the Quinn bill, which is a statewide, it's a state statute that speaks to educational incentive. They get 10%, 20%, and 25% for an associate, bachelor's, or master's degree. And the arguments made at town meeting and supported by the voters that rather than increase what at that time was a 5%, 10%, and 15% educational incentive just for the Police Department, which was in a collective bargaining agreement and supported by state statute, that if the concept of a better-educated employee being a better employee was true, and that was the arguments being made and supported, that rather than increase 5%, 10%, and 15% for one department to 10%, 20%, and 25%, that we develop an educational incentive for all employees at 5%, 10%, and 15%. And that's what's been done here and has been in place for eight years now. So it is true that 18 employees out of our 73 employees qualify for 5%, 10%, or 15% based on an associate, a bachelor's, or a master's degree, so it matches what the town had always given to the police.
And name, address, and stay close to the microphone.
Okay. Peter Millholland, Lantern Lane.
I'm sorry, Peter?
Millholland.
Yep, from?
Lantern Lane.
Lantern Lane, okay.
Okay. My question about the cost of living adjustment, is this a contractual obligation, or is this discretionary?
It's both. We have four unions in town, police, fire, dispatch, and clerical, and the 2% applies to all Stowe employees. Since I've been here, there's never been a difference between, for a cost of living, unions always gotten what non-union and vice versa. That's not true in every town. The other thing that's true about this is Stowe has no multiple-year contracts for any employee, which enables us from year to year, if necessary, myself more personally as chief fiscal officer, to make adjustments here. But it's both, this 2% is for all employees, the four union collectively, and then the non-union employees.
Thank you.
Malcolm Fitzpatrick, 323...
Stay close to the microphone.
Malcolm Fitzpatrick, 323 Great Road, Stowe. My question is... My question is, answer, or follows up the young lady before me. If one wants to find out what quote "maximum" really is, and other than what's published in here, is that public information?
Certainly is.
Where can one find it?
You could come to me and ask for it, and I'd provide it. I can give you this evening, as I said, it's 18 individuals. I have them lined out. The average across 18, we have a good mix of 5%, 10%, and 15% across the board. It averages to about $4,500 per employee out of the total, spread out over the 18. Some have master's degree, they get 15% above their base, 10% for bachelor's, and 5% for... It doesn't, by the way, it doesn't include the town administrator?
A well-educated person.
Well, I developed the policy, by the way, in support of all our employees and had it ratified by the, a year later at town meeting. I excluded myself, the town accountant, and the police chief. The sense was, as a condition of my employment, they were looking for a master's degree to start. So, those three positions get no educational incentive.
I guess my question is, Mr. Moderator, is there any review of this? I mean, I believe as was stated, we need a well-educated employee, but is there any review to see if that is indeed helping them do their job for the town better?
Mr. Wrigley?
To the degree that any employer has matrix by which you can measure that, I would answer yes. The first is that I have to review and approve all the course credits, the colleges that they went to, to make sure they're accredited, and look at their transcripts. With respect to whether individually I can measure day-to-day quantifiably how much more improved or better that performance is because of that degree, I can't. But in the private sector where I got the same thing, I don't believe they could either. So, if that's what you're looking for, I couldn't tell you that I could do that.
I'll talk to you later.
Margie Lynch Foxborough, Rhode Island, Stowe. To what extent is a person's level of education taken into account when their initial salary is set? Is that a consideration when you fix that initial amount with this incentive being applied on top of it?
It is. And actually, five years ago, for those of you that recall, we undertook a townwide position classification survey, the comprehensive one, took two years. We did it ourselves at no cost, in great credit to the departments. I mean, we had eight towns that we compared Stowe to, including the educational incentive and every other marker. We attempted to blend the two to get what we thought was a comprehensive review of position classification, job description, and any incentives, bonuses, stipends, any add-ons that went into it. And we did that, presented it at town meeting, had salary adjustments made and approved at town meeting in 2005, hasn't been modified at all since that point, but all of that was taken into account at the time that we did it, and continues each year as I go through each budget and each request for either a reclass or the educational incentive as it might affect the overall total compensation that one is given, and comparing that to another comparable position either in the town or outside the town.
Thank you. Yes?
Paul Chason, Virchell Road. I don't know that I have a question, but more of a comment.
Closer to the microphone so they can get it on tape.
More of a comment than a question. I mean, I think it's laudable that the budget for this year is level-funded. It's, I think, a great credit, but it seems to me all forward-looking trends are going in the wrong direction. I mean, we've got lower state aid, we know it's going to be lower. We've got, so cuts in local aid. We've got, in the Neshoba Regional, there's some one-time stimulus package money, some grants, that sort of thing, may not be here next year. There's our borrowing costs certainly going up, our debt service going up, health insurance costs going up. You know, in the private sector, there's been layoffs, there've been reductions in force, there've been reductions in hours of work, there've been reductions in pay levels. You know, when do we recognize that here in Stowe? I don't want to be sitting here next year looking at the fact that, well, because we've added some costs that we might not have had to this year, we're now faced with a more serious problem next year and going forward. And I think the Finance Committee has an obligation to look more forward and to recommend an increase of something that is, it's not essential. I think it's foolish at this point, given what's happening around us. We have to recognize that. So, it's not a question, but it's how I feel, you know?
Okay. Mr. Wrigley, do you want to make a comment?
I understand and appreciate completely, but I will tell you this. I've been here 18 years, and I've been looking forward for 18 years. Just give you some numbers, they'll give you a sense of how we annually attempt to govern our costs. Between 1993 and 2010, the population in Stowe averaged an annual increase of 1.5%. If you do a headcount of our employees, we've been spot-on at about 1.5%. We've never grown based on any other factors when, even when we're flush with money, we were sure not to grow during those times. Since 2001 till 2010, if you look at the annual actual budget increase, rate of increase annually, it's 4.6%. Our revenues have grown on average during that period of time by two more percentage points. We've always lived within our means and then some. So, when times were flush and others might have been getting bigger raises and the rest of it, we didn't take them, particularly for these times. That 2%, just to give you a sense of the, on the total budget that we're approving tonight if it's approved, for every percentage cost of living increase on our employees, it's about $35,000 a year. If you take that 2% away, 70,000. It's 3/10 of 1% of the total budget that you're going to look at. If you look at the total amount of our budget expenditures and that portion, what's related to employees, we're running at 50%. I was in the private sector and the public sector, 50% based for salary on your total budget is very competitive and has been. If you look around and see what they're spending for salaries, personnel, as a percentage of the whole, 50 marks up real close. The last point I would make to you is that this year's budget, 2010 and 2011, are essentially level-funded. We're leaving in your pocket almost a million dollars, within Prop 2.5, and all of that's a result of a conscious effort to try to understand and appreciate not just the recession now. I've been through three recessions. They do come. You need to plan for them, and I think we've done that incrementally, so we're not forced to make tragic choices that someplace are making now.
Thank you.
I do appreciate that.
Somebody else gets a chance to speak first. You can make a second comment.
Bill Booth, 14 Evelyn Road. Mine is a comment, also not a question. My employer got hit pretty hard in December '08 by the change in circumstances, and we had to do a lot of cutting back. Those of us who were fortunate enough to still be employed were perfectly content to be employed at or below our previous earnings. But things got a little better this year, and although the sentiment is the same, that everyone would have been happy without a raise, my employer, in fact, did come through with a small increase for everyone on the basis that things had gotten enough better that they felt they could afford it. I think what we're looking at here is that the town this year is in a position to afford a small increase, and maybe next year, things will be tougher, and maybe next year, we might even have to cut back a bit. But I think the time to do that is when there's a real need. I think right now, we're, there's not a need to shave a little off our town employees' earnings.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move to the vote. We are voting for the wage and salary schedule as printed in the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. That is almost unanimous, clearly more than 2/3. A majority is all that was required. I will describe the quantum of the vote for purposes of the town clerk. Some things require majority, some 2/3. If it's unanimous, it's obvious that it passed unanimously, and that helps as well. Most of these will be majority votes, though. Let us move on to Article V. Before, well, go ahead, make the motion, and then I will put my slide up. Thanks.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,157,165 as recommended by the town administrator and selectmen for items 1 through 75 inclusive as printed in the warrant under the column entitled Fiscal Year 2011 Budget, Town Administrator Selectmen Recommended. Each item to be considered a separate appropriation for the purposes designated and the same to be expended only for such purposes.
And I heard a second. Okay, this is the big operating budget motion, if we can have the slide. So, Article IV was the wage and salary schedule, position by position. Now, we're voting on the actual operating budget, which is printed on several pages of the warrant. And the way we're going to do that is the way we've done this in the past. I have here an image from page 18 of the warrant. I just want to orient everybody to what's on those pages. So, the line numbers are all the way to the left. The department and the description of the budget is in the next column. The column after that is labeled the Fiscal Year 2010 Actual Budget. That is what we voted at last May's town meeting for that particular line item. The next column is labeled Fiscal Year 2011 Budget Requested. So, when the budget was made, each department requested certain amounts of money. That's reflected in that column. The column that Mike is now pointing to, the second from the end, is the budget that the town administrator and selectmen decided upon. Agreed upon is the appropriate budget, and the last column is what the Finance Committee recommended. Now, the good news is that almost all of these line items, there is agreement among all three of those last columns, okay? But what we're going to do is I will go through this department by department and page by page, asking if there are any questions. If you go to the next slide, I think, I will tell you, if you didn't have time to pore over the warrant, I will tell you where there are discrepancies between the request and what the Selectmen and Finance Committee ultimately submitted for your approval. In every case, and please correct me if I'm wrong, in every case, you have the town administrator, the selectmen, and the Finance Committee in total agreement on every line item. There are just a few where the original budget request from the department might have been different, okay? So, what we'll do is we're going to go through this, as I said. We'll start with General Government. That's a total of 32 lines that spreads over many pages. So, we'll start on page 15, which has line items 1 through 5, none of which have any Are there any questions about any of those line items? What we're going to do is find out if any questions exist on any line items, put those aside, and vote on the rest of the budget. And then, we will go back and talk about the line items about which there were questions. Does everyone understand the process? Good. I'm sorry? Okay. So, line items 1 through 5 are good as is, no questions? Okay, let's move on to page 16, line items 6 through 12. Again, no discrepancies here to my eye. Any questions about any line items? Which one would you like to, is it a simple one, or?
Number seven?
Number seven.
You want to discuss it now or later?
Is it a clarification, or you want to have an extended discussion of it?
I'd just like to know who this or what this is.
Mr. Wrigley, can you clarify that for us?
I can. The state passed a new state ethics law this year, and minimally, it requires that all of our town agents, board members, employees, volunteers have to take a state ethics exam online, keep records of said results. And there's been an increase in the administrative hours, and essentially, what I've done here is added five hours a week to town building clerical so that the town clerk's administrative assistant can spend five more hours a week managing this ethics responsibility.
So, we're not creating a new position, but paying for something the state requires and putting it into a present position?
Correct. What I'm, what we're doing is increasing by five hours a week a current employee's responsibilities.
But we're not creating a new position?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on lines 6 through 12? Thank you, Mr. Wrigley, for that clarification. Okay, let's move on to page 17, which is line items 13 through 20. And as noted on my slide, I don't know that you can read it, there were differences between the budget requested and the one ultimately agreed upon and suggested by the administrator, selectmen, and Finance Committee on line 15, $300 difference. Line 17, about a $3,000 difference. And line 20, about a $10,000 difference.
Mr. Moderator, may I make a suggestion, and it refers back, but refers to others, I believe? To me, wages are for a position, and I would like to see, like, on seven and maybe on others, like Finance Committee wages, that they be labeled as expenses and not wages per se, because to me, wages are for a position someone holds. And maybe, maybe I'm wrong on that, but...
You're trying to clarify if it's additional hours versus new people?
Yes.
Okay.
And if, to me, we pay wages to a person who has no other job than being clerk of a building or something.
Mr. Wrigley, would you like to comment?
With respect to line item seven, town building clerical wages is multiple. There's more than one person receiving wages here, and it allows me the flexibility for part-time personnel to perhaps use them where we need to. And I think that flexibility, to me, is more important than necessarily having a line item that just specifies a specific job description with a person. And expenses technically by DOR, they tend not to want you to meld together operating expenses if that, if in fact what you're describing or defining are wages.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, let's move on to page 18. We're still in the General Government category, and those are line items 21 to 27. I noticed that line 23 had a difference of about $4,500, but again, the last two columns are the same. Any questions about any of those lines? I see someone coming to the microphone.
Is there a very good question?
That's okay.
Even though I'm one of the veterans, Kathleen Papelcheck, 1020 Bolton Road, can you please explain the initials ITAC? Just refresh my memory what that means.
I had the same question, actually. I had the same question.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Well, Information Technology Advisory Committee. The acronym is somewhat dated now, but it's still essentially is information technology.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Okay, let's move on to page nineteen.
I'm sorry, May.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I hate to be persistent on this, but again, and I know we're having an article coming up for assessment review in town, or third, pardon with town. But we now have on, under thirteen and fourteen, we have principal assessor wages. Are these for... Do we have a principal assessor qualified to... I didn't realize we did.
So Malcolm, you're back on page seventeen.
I guess I am. I'm slow on getting out of the seat.
All right, now, let's answer the question.
We do have a principal assessor, and that reflects that person's wage. The line below it, assessor's clerical wages involves two employees. That collectively add there, the two of them combined, that's the total wages for those two, and there is a principal assessor, a position.
When did we create that?
Several years ago. I can't recall expressly when.
Somehow, I guess, I think that this should reflect whether we're paying a person or two people or so on, and not collectively be wages or a fund that you can draw out for specific purposes. I mean, I think...
I think, Malcolm, I think that's a difference of how one makes a budget. What we're here to discuss is the amount of money on these columns, and it sounds to me like if these columns were the same last year, you're talking about a structurally different way of presenting the budget.
But when we approve these wages, whether they're for a person or just a kitty that can be used, the difference is that you can almost double this amount if they're paid to a full-time person because of benefits and other things.
Okay, let me clarify. We cannot double the amount.
No, no, no.
Unless town meeting says we can.
I'm not...
All you're voting on is whether we can spend that amount of money.
The amount that is here is a large percent greater, almost equal, for benefits and health costs and other things.
I don't know how you can...
What?
I don't know how you can say that.
Because you're saying what...
I'm only looking at what's here in the warrant.
What?
I'm looking at... The point under discussion is whether you approve the amount in line thirteen and line fourteen. That's all we're talking about.
And I'm saying that we approve...
Yes.
For example, pick your principal assessor's wages of sixty-three to twenty. Is that the total amount that is costing us, the town, to have that person?
These are the wages.
The salaries. I'm asking, is that...
Malcolm, I think your comments are out of order now.
Well, I don't think so.
Well, I do, and it's my opinion that it counts right now. Are there any other questions about... We were up to page nineteen, as I recall, line items twenty-eight to thirty-two. Okay. Let's move on to Public Safety. Line items thirty-three to forty-one. There's a small... There's a difference under line thirty-eight. Any questions? No question. Is that a question coming? No? We'll move on to Public Works, which extends from twenty-one to twenty-two, pages twenty-one to twenty-two. That's line items forty-two to forty-nine. Again, I highlighted for myself, small differences, I don't want to say small, between line item forty-seven and forty-nine. But again, Finance Committee, Administrator, and Board of Selectmen approved the lines that are there in the last columns. Hearing and seeing, no questions. Let's move to Human Services. Those are line items fifty to fifty-seven on page twenty-two. No questions, comments? Culture and Recreation, pages twenty-three and twenty-four, line items fifty-eight to Want to make sure I give you time?
Mr. Moderator, I had a question about line item sixty-seven, the lighting of the clock. Where's the clock? Oh, I'm sorry. Kathleen Willis, forty-five Walcott Street.
Well, the question remains, where is the clock?
Yeah, where's the clock?
Mr. Walra?
Mr. Moderator, the town clock is on the steeple of the First Parish Church.
An excellent question and an excellent answer. Let's move on to Townwide Expenses, which is includes line items sixty-eight to seventy. Not page sixty-eight to seventy, typo on my part. Any questions about the Townwide Expenses? Next, the School Districts. Line item seventy-one is Neshoba Regional, seventy-two Minuteman. This is the bulk of our expenses. I think, as was pointed out by Mr. Sarno at the start of town meeting in his presentation, that we owe a big debt of appreciation to both school districts this year for helping out immensely in making this budget work. Town Administrator, all the town employees, but also the school districts have done what they could to make what could have been a very difficult year a much more manageable year. So I think we should recognize that as well. Any questions about those line items? Okay. And Debt Service is the... Includes the last three items. That's on page twenty-six, line items seventy-three to seventy-five. Okay. This is the last chance for anyone who has a question about the budget to say it. Otherwise, we're going to take the motion to... Okay?
Alan Fierce, Redacre Road. Since you've given us the opportunity to jump back, I was looking at the group insurance numbers, which jumped up from last year five hundred, almost five hundred and eighty thousand to six hundred forty-four thousand. I see the various committees are in agreement, but that's a fairly large jump up. We all know that health insurance costs are rising, but I thought we might ask for some explanation of what efforts were made to try to minimize that additional increment this year.
Mr. Wrigley, can you help us out?
I threatened to pull Stowe out of the seventeen town and school district consortium, but that didn't move them, Al. These premiums have been set, negotiations. Our treasurer-collector represents the town on the committee that represents the seventeen communities and school districts that we're part of. And all I can tell you is looking at the minutes and looking at the numbers and the deliberation due diligence they went through, these are the premiums that are set. We've got a... For most of our cafeteria-style HMOs were seventy-five, twenty-five, or fifty-fifty on indemnity, which is any dock or any place. And those percentages are about as good as most communities get. I don't know what else to tell you. We are looking at the state's offer, GIC. But a year ago, when I looked at the numbers, they were less than one percent, as you did a side-by-side. But as you probably are aware, there's pending legislation to uncomplicate that sum, I'm not certain will improve the comparison for premium costs. But what the state failed to do in the legislation was to allow the communities the luxury that they have, which is they're not required to reach an agreement with collective bargaining when they set their premium rates at the state level, but they were going to require us to. And I can tell you, as a matter of experience, whatever we may have picked up on the one percent to get in agreement with four unions, and this isn't a criticism, but some of the restrictions on that, as a net, I would assume we'd probably lose money. However, they're attempting to change the legislation, which would allow us the same luxury. If they do, we certainly take a closer look at it. I hate to use the word uncontrollable, Alan, but that's what that is right now, unless we leave that seven... And that district's been good to us, the seventeen communities that we're in. They're looking at dropping some of what we, I wouldn't call mandates, but what becomes a standard package, and offering some flexibility and discretion to take a narrower purchase. Instead, there's a tendency to expand all these programs, to include things that I myself wouldn't include, but I don't know what else to say about that, Alan.
Okay. We are now voting on Article Five, the General Budget. The motion was to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,157,165, the exact amount that was in the warrant. This requires a majority to pass. All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. All those opposed, that passes almost unanimously, well more than two-thirds. I will now entertain a motion to take out of order Article Thirty-nine. And the reason for that is we have guests from Minuteman Regional High School here who have to be at four places at the same time, a difficult task even for the people from Minuteman. And so they've been nice enough to stay here tonight for the budget discussion in case there were questions, and as well for Article Thirty-nine. So Ms. Spear.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we take Article Thirty-nine out of order immediately prior to Article Six.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the explanation, but we need town meeting's approval to do that. This needs a majority vote. All those in favor? All those opposed, please raise your cards. That passes unanimously. Okay, we will move on to consider Article Thirty-nine. Ms. Spear.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town hereby approves the sum of $725,000 of borrowing, authorized by the Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study to consider options for making improvements to the district's high school building located at 758 Merritt Road, Lexington, Massachusetts, which options shall include but not be limited to renovating, reconstructing, expanding, remodeling, and adding to the district's high school, or any combination of the foregoing, said some to be expended at the direction of the school building committee. The Massachusetts School Building Authority's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any cost of the project that the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district, and that the total amount of the borrowing authorized by this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
We have a recommendation from the Finance Committee on this motion.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this warrant article. The feasibility study is required stuff by the MSBA. Stowe will not be contributing the whole $725,000 to this. Instead, our part of this will be about $25,000 over five years or so.
Do people have any questions about this article, this motion? I can tell you, while Malcolm's coming to the microphone, there's a very complete description of what the plan is on the Minuteman website, describes everything that's going on there. But again, we have people from the Minuteman School District here to answer questions if there are any.
Malcolm? That's Patrick. Can you tell me...
Close to the microphone for the...
Sorry.
Thank you.
I didn't quite hear, Gary, the amount that Stowe would be indebted of that $725?
Well, the numbers aren't finalized yet, but we think it's around $25,000 spread out over about six years of this, of this $750, yes.
How come we are so little of that $725?
Because our portion of, and I'm probably not the only guy to be talking about this, but our portion, what we pay into the Minuteman School District, is a lot lower than a lot of the other surrounding towns.
So it's a very small portion.
Yes.
Can you tell me what, on the need status, what is the... Where Minuteman sits in terms of MBTA, or the state MSBA need?
Maybe we should refer to the Minuteman representative. Again, while she is getting to, or Alice DeLuca, who's our representative, I want to just make sure people understand, this is funding of a feasibility study. Correct?
I ask because I'd like to know where we're putting the...
Hi, I'm Alice DeLuca. I'm your representative to the Minuteman School Committee. I've been your representative for, I think, nine years now, something like that, still here. And we are a sixteen-town district. Stowe is actually a great supporter of Minuteman and has sent a lot of children to that school over the years. It is required by our regional agreement that all sixteen communities vote in favor of this particular thing in order for us to do any renovations to that building. And I think, you know, Stowe has been so supportive over the years that I'm hoping that Stowe will again consider doing that. We only pay a small portion of this amount because there are sixteen communities. We're just one of sixteen towns.
So is it as simple as just the $725 divided by years?
No, it's more complicated than that. And actually, we have...
You have to go to Minuteman to figure out.
We have, no, we have Kami Lamica here, who's our business administrator, and she will explain the nitty-gritty.
Thank you.
Good evening. The debt for the feasibility study is based on the regional agreement with the sixteen towns for Minuteman. Under that regional agreement, capital costs are split by the number of students for the previous October one from each sending town. Stowe's percentage is 5.7% of the capital cost to do that, the $725. MSBA is paying 40% of it, which is roughly $290,000. So the sixteen towns are spending approximately $435,000 to have the feasibility study prepared, which will examine the building, any constraints that we have with the building, and make recommendations of what going forward. The results of that study will come forward in a future town meeting to all sixteen towns again of what the recommendation is, and to seek approval of the sixteen towns before any project goes forward.
So we have, from your presentation, the actual dollar amount for Stowe?
Correct. It's a five-year cost.
About $6,000 a year.
Correct. Starting in fiscal twelve, so now this coming fiscal year, the following fiscal year will be the first payment of approximately $826 to Stowe. And then after that, it's approximately $65, $6,300 for the remaining four years.
So, but I still, my understanding of the state building system is they list, they evaluate before you get into this what you're, how needy you are, and they have a ranking list.
Correct. The system's changed somewhat. We file statements of interest. The superintendent and the school committee filed a statement of interest a year ago. We were notified by Treasurer Cahill, who's the head of the Mass School Building Authority, last July, that he was preparing a $100 million special program for vocational renew and repair program. So it's a separate funding source from regular school districts. And as part of that, he had pulled out nine vocational schools who had submitted statements of interest, Minuteman being one of them. So those nine schools, because of the needs that they saw were very special needs for all the schools, the vocational schools were built about the same timeframe as Minuteman, and not many of them have a lot of repair renovation work since they were actually built in the seventies.
That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we are now voting on Article Thirty-nine. The motion is to see if the town of Stowe will approve the sum of $725,000 of borrowing. And... And I have that it's a majority. Mr. Witten, it's probably a two-thirds, right? Yeah? Okay, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That is unanimous, almost unanimous. There were two dissenting votes. Nearly unanimous, well more than the two-thirds required. Yes? Yes?
I want to thank you all, I want to thank you all for your support. So far, we have six towns in favor and one town reconsidering tonight. They voted no. They were twenty, about two dozen voters in that town could stop this from happening. So I want to just thank you for supporting this project.
It's out of order, but much appreciated. Okay, the next order of business is the consent calendar. So as I described it before, I am going to read the title of each article. The motions, with one exception, are exactly as printed in the warrant. Now, the articles again tell you what the subject will be, but the actual motion which identifies the source is at the back of your warrant on pages forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two. So if you want something to be held, let me know. If there are any changes to the article, I will tell you, to the motion, I should say, I will tell you as we get there. When we're all done deciding which ones are going to come out, we will have a motion from the Board of Selectmen for the remaining articles. Article Six is the reserve fund. Article Seven, audit of financial records. Article Eight, revolving fund or inspection fees. Article Nine, revolving fund for advanced life support. You want to hold that one? Okay, Article Nine. So holding it just means we'll take it out of the major motion and we'll come back and deal with it in the order it was, would have been dealt with. Article Ten, transfer to conservation fund land maintenance. Eleven, transfer from wetlands protection fund. Article Twelve, transfer from sale of lots account. Article Thirteen, update of property valuations. Article Fourteen, town records binding and repair. Article Fifteen, town common sign. Article Seventeen, highway road, oh, Article Sixteen, highway road machinery and private ways.
I have a question.
Let's deal with the question, if it's a quick one. Sixteen.
Nineteen, you said?
Sixteen. Sixteen, okay. Article Seventeen, highway road construction.
I have one sixteen.
Article Sixteen?
One sixteen.
Okay, Mike, you have fifteen, he meant. Fifteen was held, too? Seventeen, highway road construction. Eighteen, federal safe drinking water act. Nineteen, household hazardous waste. Twenty, public health nurse. Twenty-one, solid waste disposal container. Twenty-two, construction and maintenance of water holes. Twenty-three, Stowe Cultural Council. Twenty-four, veterans benefits. Twenty-five, planning board engineering consulting and master plan expenses. Twenty-six, employee educational incentive program. Twenty-seven, legal services. Twenty-eight, police officer and firefighter medical payments. Article Twenty-nine, weights and measures testing. Article Thirty, swift reach nine-one-one notification system. Article Thirty-one, police department security upgrade. Article Thirty-two, there's a change to Article Thirty-two. The dollar amount will be moved as ten thousand rather than the eight thousand as printed in the warrant. This came up, we, no, let's, let's leave it unless there are other questions. Let me just explain the change. This was originally going to be on the fall town meeting warrant. At the time, the cost was thought to be eight thousand in deference to the number of issues on that town meeting agenda. It was put to the spring meeting in the interim. The dollar amount is more certain and is now ten thousand. There was another discussion about whether that meant it made it a capital budget item, but it was decided that a capital budget item had two requirements, that it be ten thousand dollars or more or have a useful lifespan of more than three years. This is an annual expense. It doesn't have that lifespan. So the capital committee informed us that it did not to be, need to be run through them. If there are other questions about that, we can hold it, but hopefully that explanation will suffice. Any other questions about the Lake Boone? Okay, so we'll leave it in the consent calendar, but the dollar amount is ten thousand. Article Thirty-three, transfer from overlay surplus account. Article Thirty-four, transfer to the stabilization fund. Article Thirty-five, community preservation expenses. Got a hold? Article Thirty-five is held. Article Thirty-six, community preservation reserves. Article Thirty-seven, community preservation adjustment for fiscal year 2010 reserves. Okay, so when the selectmen make the motion for the consent calendar, we will leave out Articles Nine, Fifteen, Sixteen, and Thirty-five. Can you handle that, Ms. Sturgis?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the annual town meeting take actions on Articles Six, Seven, Eight, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty, Twenty-one, Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-four, Twenty-five, Twenty-six, Twenty-seven, Twenty-eight, Twenty-nine, Thirty, Thirty-one, Thirty-two, Thirty-three, Thirty-four, Thirty-six, and Thirty-seven. As said motions are printed in the consent calendar, a copy of which has been provided to the voters at this meeting without debate on any such articles and provided that upon the request of any voter at this meeting made before the vote is taken on this motion, an article shall be dropped from the consent calendar and shall be acted upon in the ordinary course and order of business at this town meeting.
Second.
And I think Ms. Sturgis said as printed in the warrant except for the eight thousand to ten thousand dollar change.
Yes.
That's what I heard.
That's what I said.
And Mr. Duggan, you don't have an issue with that? You still second?
None whatsoever.
Thank you. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That is unanimous, minus one. That's more than two-thirds, nearly unanimous. Okay, thank you very much. I think we owe a debt of gratitude to the people that made the consent calendar possible because we just dispensed with a lot of routine business in a very expeditious manner. And our debts go in fact to Ed Newman, who I think introduced the concept of the consent calendar to our town meeting. So, and yet we preserve the ability to go back and discuss the articles that weren't routine. So starting with that, we will entertain a motion on Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize upon the recommendation of the selectmen the establishment of a revolving fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E., one half for FY two oh one one, to which shall be credited all fees received for advanced life support services provided by the town of Stowe to a limit of forty thousand dollars for fiscal year 2011 to be expended by the fire department without further appropriation for the purpose of payment of all costs associated with providing advanced life support ambulance services.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion under Article Nine. Somebody held this one.
I thought there was going to be a presentation, sorry. My question is, is Tom pointing for somebody else?
Well, if, maybe we can answer your question.
Okay, my question is, how are we, I got several on this, how are we funding this revolving fund? It says it's going to be funded by the town of Stowe.
Bill, can you, Mr. Wrigley, I think, will speak to this first, and if there are further questions.
Actually, I'll allow the chief to do so, but essentially, Malcolm, it's fees. It allows us to contract for ALS services through a private contractor, which is currently Emerson Hospital. We don't have ALS services sponsored ourselves. So it contractually allows us to pay a third party. Is that, chief, you want to expound on that?
Yes, that is correct. Emerson Hospital has signed a contract with a private ambulance service. It's actually pro-ambulance out of Cambridge to provide the ALS services, but it was Emerson Hospital that subcontracted with this provider. And basically, when we call for ALS services, payments are now being made through that third party. We don't pay Emerson anymore, that's being paid through a third party.
But who funds the forty thousand dollars for this revolving fund? The town, it says in here, how are we funding it?
Well, I know that all the ambulance billing that we receive goes, goes back into the general fund. None of that ends up in the fire department.
I still don't understand.
Bill, isn't this, the fees that you receive for advanced life support, the way I'm reading it, go into this fund? We're not putting any money in, it's as the services are rendered.
There's no taxpayers, this is a fee for service. It's an administrative process that allows for the payment to a third party, fees that are charged by the town, we keep for our basic service, we peel off a piece, it goes to the contractor for the ALS. It's just a process. It's much like the fees in the, for the inspectors. The, the fees are charged by the town inspectors to you as a homeowner getting the inspection. The fee goes to the, doesn't go to the town, it goes to our inspectors. In this case, because there's a third party involved, we don't offer ALS services. It's just a process through for fees.
No, I asked.
Malcolm, Malcolm thinks that the town is seeding this fund, I think. This is not, the town is not putting money in this fund.
I ask this in part because I once suggested that since my insurance and most other people's insurance, we can collect, we can pay for ambulance service. And it was shot down by the then, then-town council that we can, we should not do this. So I'm wondering who, where this funding comes from for this payment of service, even if it's a pass-through, someone's got to be funding it.
Your insurance company.
What?
Your insurance company.
Sure.
The money is going into this fund, right? Go ahead.
Maybe I can clarify that a little bit for you. We, the way the fire department works and the ambulance billing works, when we, when we make a run, basically all that gets sent, we have a third party. Right now, we're using a firm called Comstar, who takes all of our billing, all of our ambulance reports and bills that out to the insurance companies, Medicare, whoever, whoever that is that, that would owe that bill, whatever you have for insurance. That money comes back into the town. Basically, every month, they cut a check, that goes into the, to the general fund. Along with that, I have a separate account, too, where actually I pay the billing company, they get a service fee for doing that. But it's basically that money that's coming back in on a monthly basis back to the town of Stowe.
I guess that's what I wondered, was asking. Then my question becomes why limit it to forty thousand? Because I would think it would vary from year to year.
Mr. Wrigley?
I believe that's the maximum the statute allows for a revolving fund of this kind, which is why forty thousand's in the previous one as well. It's the maximum allowed under the statute because the presumption is you've got a pocket of cash sitting there. In our case, it's not true, but in the event for those that do have it, they limit the amount you can actually carry over.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of the motion under Article Nine, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That is unanimous, required a majority. The next article in sequence is Article Fifteen, a motion under Article Fifteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of three thousand dollars to repair and repaint the sign on the town common.
We had someone who held that motion coming to the microphone.
Gregor Trinkusranal Wheeler Road. The reason I'm, I'm asked for this to be held is that the way the sign is positioned and has been from the beginning, it is right in the eyes of somebody coming up Route Sixty-two. If you're on one seventeen, you don't see the sign unless you have to turn left and take your eye off of traffic. So my recommendation is in the process of doing the work as being done, that it be redesigned in such a way that you can see it from both directions, since not everybody lives down Sixty-two. Thank you.
Duly noted. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, we need a majority vote on Article Fifteen. Raise and appropriate the sum of three thousand dollars. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed? Nearly unanimous, well more than two-thirds. The next article in sequence is, that was held, is Article Sixteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sums of money for the highway department purposes as set forth in the schedule below. One, for the road machinery account, forty-one thousand, four hundred, three dollars. Two, for repairs on private ways, fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, Malcolm?
Malcolm Fitzpatrick. Can, I'm not sure how often I should say that, Mr. Moderator.
We, we enjoy hearing it.
I thought you recognized me the first time I was up here. What are private ways and what are private drives? And are they really private in terms of who pays what cost for them?
Can the moderator have some help answering that question?
I'll ask Mike Clayton to assist me here. However, broadly defined, a private way is different from a public way technically such that roads that are still privately held allows, this allows the town to go on those private ways and make repairs for safety reasons. We have a local acceptance statute that allows that to occur, and this money is for the cost of providing whatever improvements, public safety improvements that may be required by the highway department. If I understand correctly, the difference between public and private, essentially ownership.
It's, it's, well, there are some.
Or you asked me a rhetorical question.
There, what?
You already know, are you asking?
I'm asking because I noticed on my walk up here tonight, there's a road that goes to the right, I forgot its name. I believe that road is, says private drive on it. So we have private ways and private drives, and.
I don't believe there's a distinction there, but.
Normally, a private drive, Mike Clayton, Superintendent of Streets, normally a private drive, the highway department does not maintain. Private ways are maintained by the town upon request of the owners of the private way. However, a private drive is a private drive, driveway, so to speak.
And I guess my follow-up question is why are we maintaining or doing anything for private ways? I would see this as an area, I know traditionally we have, but I would see this as an area because that sign up there that says private says you're not welcome here.
Yeah, that's kind of a condescending word to use for private way as most of the private ways in town are open to the public.
I know legally they have to be.
Well, not necessarily.
Yes, the law says you have to be. Yes, the law says you have to be. If it's, if you gain access off it for frontage, it's open to the public.
Okay.
Now, therefore, I object to that sign that says private, and we are-
Malcolm, let's talk about this motion.
I am, too.
Well, no, 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 you're talking about a specific road that you saw on the way up here.
I'm talking about maintaining private ways that the public is not invited to go on because there's a sign up there.
I don't see that. I see for repairs on private ways-
I don't believe we have any of those in town.
I'll talk to you later, Mike.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Article 16? Hearing and seeing none, move to the vote. This requires a majority. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed, raise your cards. That is unanimous, minus one. So well more than two-thirds. We can now move on to Article 35.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate, from fiscal year 2011, community preservation fund annual revenues, the sum of $30,000 or any lesser sum, to be expended for wages and expenses associated with the creation, implementation, and maintenance of community preservation programs, in accordance with the provision of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, including but not limited to office supplies, clerical assistance, property surveys, appraisals, attorney fees, and other professional services, recording fees, printing, and all other necessary and proper expenses for the fiscal year 2011, in accordance with a budget to be prepared for the town administrator.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
I'm not sure why anyone else doesn't have the curiosity I do, but, is this going to be a new position? Where's this money going to in terms of personnel?
Go ahead. Someone can answer that.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. We have competition to answer the question. I recognize Laura, Ms. Beer, but she's deferring to you. Mr. Wilber?
Bob Wilber, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, 288 Red Acre Road. The Community Preservation Act itself allows communities that have enrolled in the Community Preservation Act, like Stowe, we can set aside up to 5% of the collections from the previous year for administrative purposes. That covers everything from the, covering the salary of the existing administrative support for the committee, which is relatively modest but important, as well as having funds on hand for due diligence to explore projects. Those funds have been very helpful in terms of being able to prevent, excuse me, present something that has fewer questions on town meeting floor, because we've been able to do some due diligence to answer some of those questions in advance. Any, we have, we have never expended the full amount of the funds in any fiscal year, and any unspent funds go back into the town's community preservation fund.
Thank you. Malcolm?
I didn't hear the answer to my question. My question is, if we have personnel, is it contract, or are we hiring a person to do this job?
Mr. Wilber?
It is not a new position, just to clarify that before the questioner asked that before. This has been a position that's been in place for, for a number of years.
Okay, thank you.
It is a town position.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the motion under Article 35? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, raise your cards. And all those opposed? That is unanimous. Required just a majority. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to Article 38. Before we hear a motion on Article 38, I would like to call your attention to a list of outgoing volunteers. From the Board of Selectmen, Kathleen Farrell and Ellen Sturgis will be departing this year, after this meeting, I guess. Yes, a round of applause is perfectly appropriate. From the Conservation Commission, Dennis Walsh will be retiring. From the Council on Aging, Jim Souda will be retiring. Cultural Council, Catherine Hammel and Elizabeth Stepp. From the Finance Committee, Henry Kogopian. From the Historical Commission, Ralph Fuller, Karen Gray, and Linda Stokes. From the Housing Authority, J.T. Tool. Randall Library Trustees, Allison Campbell and Pete Masters. And from the Zoning Board of Appeals, Gene Dwinells and Richard Martin. So I think all of them deserve a round of applause for all of their hard work. Mike has put up on the board a reminder to me to talk a little bit about Spring Fest. So fast, I missed it. But Spring Fest is coming May 14th through 16th. They have a beautiful logo. Friday night, the festivities start with the ice cream social and a silent movie. On Saturday, it's going to be a busy day, starting at 8:00 a.m. and going through midnight. Breakfast, rock bands, and a movie. The parade is at 9:30. Sunday is the Run for the Woods, Dog Fest, and Sounds of Stowe. They have a wonderful website where you can learn more about it, and I think we have a couple pictures from previous year's parades and festivities. Hopefully, you recognize yourselves or your friends. Who is that?
Brian Burrow.
Is that you, really, Brian?
Yes, it's me. In my capacity, as Republican State Committee Man for the District.
Okay, so again, there's a great website, and hope to see all of you there for some, if not all, of the festivities. We're going to move on to Article, oh, and then we have the Memorial Day Parade as well. Thank you, Mike. I said earlier, it's on Monday, May 31st. If you want to join in the parade, which is always a lot of fun, you can join the Neshoba Marching Band and the Stowe Minutemen, who will be gathering at 1:30 p.m. at the Center School. Parade starts at 2:00. Traditionally, they walk to the Brookside Cemetery, reading a Vaghetisberg address, placing the flowers. Not by me or Ms. Painter, but, Mike?
Oh, sorry.
The first graders, which is always fun. And then back walk to the War Memorial, and I think there'll be a public address. Is that correct? And questions, this is sponsored by the Stowe Veterans Grave Committee, and the members are listed there. So that's something to look forward to at the end of the month. For Article 38, we'll start with a Capitol Committee overview. Would you like to start that way, Mr. Jelenic? Screwed it up again, huh? I'll work on that. Oh, we have the members to introduce.
Surprise, what a surprise.
Gene Lynch. For people, people's knowledge, the Capitol Committee is a special committee that goes through all the Capitol requests submitted every year and rates them as to their appropriateness and whether we can afford them. They work very hard during the course of the winter and spring, and they consist of Gene Lynch, David Arsenal, Kathy Farrell, Steve Jelenic, and Ross Perry. I'm making progress, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You've basically said about all that I was going to say here, so we've reached the portion of your meeting where it's time for a little comic relief. No, actually, it's not. I'm, I'm Steve Jelenic, and I have the honor of serving as the clerk of our Capitol Planning Committee, and I've come before you tonight to give you folks a general overview of, of what Capitol Planning did leading up to this town meeting. In a few, hear from folks about some specific recommendations that we make about each one of these Capitol articles. But echoing our moderator's comments, I would like to acknowledge all the hard work that our committee has done this year. Our able-chair, Gene Lynch, who's multitasking over there. And this is a very knowledgeable group of folks, and I'm sure those of us who had to meet with us would say we're quite thorough as well. I'd like to remind people that we have openings for two associate members on the committee. So if you're interested in finding out more about that, please see me or Gene later. Mike, can I have the next slide? Again, as the moderator said, the Capitol Planning Committee is charged with considering and making recommendations about Capitol projects. As you heard earlier, there are two components to a Capitol project. One is it has to be a expenditure by the town of about, of $10,000 or more, and it has to have a useful life of three or more years. I think by definition, land acquisitions meet that, meet those criteria. Our mission, as we see it, is to help the town go ahead and make wise capital investments. And we accomplish this by meeting with the folks that are coming before you to a town meeting tonight in advance, asking them a bunch of questions about what they expect to spend the money on, how they expect to spend it, how they develop the cost estimates that they would, the money that they're requesting. And the other thing that we do is we encourage people to put together a five-year plan, so that we can all know kind of what's coming down the road. I heard folks earlier talk about, you know, wanting to be able to look forward, and I think by definition, that's what we do with respect to our Capitol articles. Next slide, Mike. What we have here is a summary table of the articles that'll be before you tonight. This is for fiscal year 2011. And note that we have three columns here. The first column is the figures that I showed last year with respect to what we expected to see this year. And you can see that the total that we were expecting to come forward with was about $520,000, $530,000. The second column represents what's actually in the warrant tonight. And as you can see, that's about $150,000 less than, the total's about $150,000 less than what we thought was going to be for this year at this time last year. I think what we found out is that the departments understand that we're in this, this tight economy, and so a number of projects that were in the works for this year have been deferred. Notably, the police chief has decided to go ahead and seek a grant to get funding for the renovations to the dispatch area of the police station. And also, the school district has put off making additional repairs to the roof of hail. It's not leaking as badly as it, as folks thought it would be. In fact, it looks like that project may be coming to an end. The other thing that the school district has decided to do is not go ahead and replace the carpeting at Pompo that it originally thought it was going to be spending money on this year. I think that perhaps is a project that's been put off indefinitely. And the Board of Health originally was, was talking about asking for money this year for a new dog kennel. They're also putting that off until another time. I would note that we have one correction on this slide, which was made in advance of our meeting tonight. The line for the fire department, you're seeing that Capitol Planning was actually going to be recommending somewhat lower number than what's in the warrant. We've since reconsidered our recommendation as far as that, and you'll be hearing more about that in a few minutes. Next, what we've got here is kind of a snapshot of what we see in the five-year plans from the various departments over the next few years. This is based on the five-year plans that have been submitted to us. I must point out that not every committee or every department goes ahead and puts together a five-year plan. That's okay. We hear from most folks that have big-ticket items, and so, you know, we're doing the best we can with respect to that. Now, I will say that these plans do change from one year to the next. As you just saw on the last slide, last year's number is $150,000 higher than this year's number. So what you see here as far as your future is, is quite likely to change. There are a couple of things, though, that we recognize are some big things that folks might want to begin to pay attention to. Notably, the fire department is going to be looking for a new truck in a couple of years. And they also have plans in the works for a fire station. These numbers, that's the 6 million down below, Mike. That's, that's in their current plan. I believe the chief would say that these are estimates, and there'll be more information coming forward about those going ahead. Now, as far as next year is concerned, you see the total for FY12 is slightly higher than what we've got in front of us this year. The big-ticket item that we see, again, is the fire department is going to be asking for about $150,000 to replace the air supply systems for the firefighters. Next one. And the last slide, we're going to go with the picture's worth a thousand words. This is actually something that one of your neighbors requested that we do this year, which is to kind of show a context of what we have as far as this year in comparison to previous years and future years. So what we have here in the blue are the Capitol expenditures that we've agreed as a town to go ahead and spend, you know, over the course of the last five years. What we have in this year's warrant article is, warrant is shown in red. And the point that I guess I'd like to make with respect to this year is that we are asking for, for lower Capitol expenditures this year than at any point in the last four years. And the last item, the last items in green are the, are the future. Again, the big number for FY14 has the, the fire department's truck in there, so. So with that, Mr. Moderator, we'd be happy to take any general questions, but I would like to point out that we are going to make recommendations about each article going forward, so we can hold off on specific questions going ahead.
Okay, thank you. The way we typically handle this Capitol budget article is that we divide it into its component parts. So I'll now entertain a motion to divide the question.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town discuss the items of this article individually and vote upon each separately as to the amount to be appropriated for each item as set forth in the separate motions proposed.
Do you have a second? Okay, all those in favor of discussing each article individually, please raise your cards. This just requires a majority. All those opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, so Article 38, first-line item.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $65,000 for external repairs and painting of the town building.
Do we have a Finance Committee recommendation on this first line?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval. The last painting of the town building was about 10 years ago, and this includes painting and associated trim repair and things like that. As one would imagine, this is not your typical painting job. It's a rather large building. It involves the rental of equipment like a cherry picker, and it's slated to take several weeks, four to five weeks.
And from the Capitol Committee, Mr. Jelenic?
You get to hear from me again. Mr. Moderator, the Capitol Planning recommends that the town approve this request. As Jim said, the building was painted last nine years ago, and the building inspector feels that the repairs need to be made this year to be certain, to certain areas of the building to prevent further damage. We believe that the inspector has demonstrated his ability to complete projects like this on time and under budget, and we anticipate that he will be able to do so in this instance as well.
Are there any questions or comments on town building repairs for $65,000? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move to the vote. This requires a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, raise your cards. That is virtually unanimous. Well more than two-thirds, just a majority was required. Line item two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $37,500 to replace the Fire Rescue Department Command Vehicle.
Do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval. The chief's current vehicle is a 2001 Chevy pickup truck. It's got about 75,000 miles on it. These are what he calls hard miles, because it idles so much, it has to stay active when it stops to keep the equipment running. It's experiencing some very serious electrical problems to the point where it doesn't start reliably, which is a very serious concern for any public safety equipment. This money would also upgrade the vehicle slightly to a Ford Explorer-size vehicle. The chief carries quite a bit of equipment with him. So this 37.5 gets the chief a reliable piece of equipment that is of a more appropriate size.
Thank you. And from the Capitol Planning Commission, Committee, Mr. Jelenic?
Mr. Moderator, Capitol Planning is in favor of the town supporting this request.
Are there any questions or comments about the fire command vehicle? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your cards. That passes unanimously. Just a majority was required. Line item three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $39,000 for a Fire Rescue Department radio system upgrade.
Second.
Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. The fire department is applying for a federal grant for communications equipment with, I believe, two other towns. The $39,000 represents the 10% required contribution from this town. The total grant would be $390,000. We're applying for the grant now. If we don't get the grant, we don't spend the money.
Thank you for that clarification. From the Capitol Planning Committee, Mr. Jelenic?
Mr. Moderator, capital planning recommends that the town approve this request. The radio system upgrade will greatly improve the department's ability to communicate, particularly with firefighters inside structures. Furthermore, we'd like to acknowledge Chief McLaughlin's commitment to obtaining grant funding to cover 90% of the cost of this new system.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the fire radio system? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move to the vote. This requires a majority as well. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed? That is unanimous. We'll move on to the fourth item.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $80,000 for a six-wheel truck and spreader for the highway department.
From the finance committee, is there a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this article. This represents money for the replacement of a dump truck sander that has reached the end of its useful lifespan.
And from the capital planning committee, Mr. Jelenek?
Finally, I have some information that Jim doesn't actually say in his motion. Mr. Moderator, capital planning recommends the town support this request. The town's gotten the most it can be expected out of this vehicle that will be replaced, since it was originally purchased 26 years ago and has already been refurbished once. Moreover, Superintendent Clayton has an exceptional track record of making wise use of the town capital, and he trusts that he will find the best deals that he can for the new vehicle.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this line item? We'll move to the vote. This requires a majority again. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, raise your cards. That is nearly unanimous, well more than two-thirds. Line item five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $54,000 to replace the roof on the highway barn.
Finance committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of the article. The fact is, the roof leaks. It's older. The leak has continued to cause internal damage to the building, which the highway department spends time repairing, and we think it needs to be repaired.
Thank you. And from the capital planning committee, Mr. Jelenek? You getting good exercise tonight?
I am. This is the last time I'll say this. Mr. Moderator, capital planning is in favor of the town supporting this request. The highway barn was built in 1975 and still has its original roof. I don't know if any of us that have been around since 1975 still have everything on the original roof. The roof now leaks in a number of critical areas, and Superintendent Clayton has told us that effective repairs to these areas can no longer be accomplished.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Fitzpatrick?
We in town seem to have a lot of roof repairs. And actually, to the school, it was because it was a flat roof, Center School, but we're going to replace it with a flat roof. But my question still is, are we replacing these roofs with the same roofs that will deteriorate over a relatively short period of time? And I would suggest that we look, maybe it'll cost a little more, but roofs that will last, like steel roofing or coated steel roofing, which will make cost more, but I think will be a much better expenditure so we don't have to keep replacing roofs in town.
Can anyone answer Malcolm's question about whether or not the roof will be the same as the current roof?
The highway department has a metal roof right now, 36 years old or so, and it will be replaced with a metal roof. So I don't know what else you want me to tell you.
Thank you.
Well, some of them give longer warranties, up to 50 years, Mike. And that's what I'm wondering is, are we buying something that is really going to last?
I will let you know.
You what?
I will let you know. I don't not, I don't remember exactly what the warranty is on it, but I can let you know.
Well, there must have been a warranty on the original one.
That I couldn't tell you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of replacing the barn roof, raise your cards. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Line item six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $33,000 for a police cruiser replacement.
Finance committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this article. The vehicle is part of the prudent scheduled replacements for the police department, and I believe is a hybrid.
We're, we're going to get there in a second. Mr. Perry, representing the capital planning committee?
Capital planning unanimously supports the purchase of this vehicle. It's a detective's and chief's vehicle. It's not a patrol vehicle. This vehicle represents the department's annual replacement of older vehicles. We also are very much impressed with the chief's willingness to break from tradition by selecting an energy-efficient hybrid vehicle.
Mr. Fierce, I've been looking forward to this for several weeks.
Alan Fierce, Redacre Road. My question has just been asked. I just wanted to confirm that this was not a cruiser. This is, this is a, a police vehicle that they will use for multi-purposes. I believe it's going to be a Ford Fusion Hybrid. I've communicated with the chief about this. I strongly support it, and I continue to hope that in the future, we can look at other options for the cruisers, and I know that will be coming up. I would ask the capital planning committee to take a look at that in the future when the cruisers actually come up for replacement. Thank you.
I have one question. Has the chief offered to give you a ride in this new cruiser? He has. I want pictures of that. It's been a long road, but we've gotten there. Hearing and seeing no further questions, I think we should enjoy the moment. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That is unanimous. Line item seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for slate roof repairs at the Randall Library.
Finance committee, Mr. Sarno?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this article. The leaks in the current slate roof have already, have already caused significant damage to the internal parts of the library. This is a necessary repair that is long overdue and would help stem future repair costs for the internal parts of the library.
Thank you. And from the capital planning committee, its chair?
I was trying to throw it at somebody, and I dropped it. Sorry.
Hopefully not me.
Capital planning is in favor of this expenditure. The, it's, it needs help, and regardless of the future of the building, it needs to be fixed.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the library roof? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. This is a majority vote. All those opposed, please raise your cards. That passes unanimously. Line eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for mold and mildew repairs at the Randall Library.
Capital, I mean, finance committee, excuse me, Mr. Sarno?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this article due to the roof leaks from the previous capital project. There is, there is significant damage to the library, including the mold and mildew damage. This damage has both resulted in aesthetic as well as functional problems for the library, and if not repaired, could also present a health hazard.
Thank you. And from the capital planning committee, Ms. Lynch?
I can't add much to that. Capital approves of this expenditure.
Thank you. Any questions and comments?
Just a comment, Gregor Trinkus, Randall Wheeler Road. This is not only going to present a major health hazard, we may lose our collection. As part of my professional duties, one of the things that I do is an environmental monitoring program for libraries and other cultural institutions around the state. And we did it in the Randall Library a couple of years ago, and frankly, it was off the charts. The mold issue is a serious issue, and frankly, if it's not done properly, we may lose the building.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, this requires a majority. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed? That is unanimous. Line nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $32,500 for an upgrade to the Hale School baseball field consisting of a new backstop, enlarged infield, and addition of a pitcher's mound and home run fence.
Finance committee, Mr. Sarno?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this article. Currently, the Hale Middle School baseball team relies on the field at center, which is part of the renovation, is actually being reduced in size to a point where the dimensional requirements won't be useful for the middle school team. So this money basically will upgrade the field at, that's currently at Hale right now to a, to a playable field for the middle school baseball team.
Thank you, Mr. Sarno. Ms. Lynch for the capital planning committee?
And I believe the softball field will be moved to the new center project. No?
There will be a softball field, I'm sorry.
At, at Center School.
Yes, there will be a softball field at Center School.
Yep. And capital is in favor of this.
Any questions or comments? Let's, Mr. Sandramano go first.
John Sandramano, 25, Taylor Road. I just had a question about the configuration. I, I think it's, I'm in favor of the article. I think it'd be great to have a real baseball field with a real 90-foot infield diamond. I wanted to make sure that the, if we're going to have a field, we're going to spend the money, that it's the right dimensions. What will the, the lines be? How, how deep is the outfield? Any, any detail on what the $32,000 provides?
Can somebody answer that question? Good. Mr. King or, no?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the annual town meeting recognize and allow Mr. George King, Assistant Vice, pardon, excuse me, Assistant Vice Superintendent, Interim Principal of Hale School to address us.
Took the words right out of my mouth. I inadvertently left Mr. King off the list of people who might address us tonight. So with the town meeting's permission, will you allow Mr. King to speak as a non-resident? Thank you. This, this building is very much home to him, so he knows the Hale auditorium better than any of us. He's the acting principal here at Hale.
Thank you. George King, Assistant Superintendent for the district and the acting principal here at Hale. The outfield configuration will be left field, be 230 feet down the line and out to center field that way. That's the reason for the addition of the fence. This district's athletic director has reviewed the proposal, and it's, it's slightly shorter than what may desire for like a middle school baseball team, but overall, given the space constraints we have, it's the only place that it can be done. And with the fence, it's believed to be very suitable for what, what is necessary.
Thank you for that clarification. Does that answer the question?
It, yeah, it, it does answer the question. I, I would have preferred a, maybe a different orientation that would allow a, a real left field. I think it'd be, be a short left, left field. I, I'm not prepared to have an alternate amendment to it.
But thank you for the clarification. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Mr. Moderator, we have over $6 million in contingency fees as part of the Center School project, and I guess I see this as related to a, something that was caused by the center field, or center field, Center School project, and therefore, why isn't this coming under that cost?
Would someone like to handle that question? Ms. Sturgis?
Ellen Sturgis, co-chair, the current building committee. We're actually not, it is, in fact, caused by the building project, but given the terms of our funding, we're not allowed to spend it on anything other than on Center School.
I guess my follow-up question, are there other costs that are going to be impacted on the town by, I mean, this was never discussed when we were discussing costs of the Center School. Are there other costs that are off-site related?
That's really out of order, Malcolm. We're talking about this article right now.
Well, we may be, but I think...
No, that's what we are talking about. So you can vote against this article if you don't want to fund it.
I guess my question, point of order, Mr. Moderator, is how does one find out about these things until we get to these on the town meeting?
That's not a point of order.
That's a point, that's a point of order.
No, it's not.
That's a question.
That's a question, to which I don't have the answer.
You're not going to answer?
We're talking about funding the, the field. Ms. Lynch?
Capital's understanding is that the softball field is covered under the Center School project. So there will be no, what we have basically a 50% cost on the softball field as we do on the rest of it.
Thank you. Does that help, Malcolm? I can't answer, and I don't think anybody else can answer, what's coming in the future.
Well, I think, and I appreciate the comment, but that's not what I heard a few minutes ago. I wish people would get together.
Well, we got the answer before the end of town meeting, so I think we should be happy about that. Any other questions or comments? We are now voting on the Hale Field for $32,500. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That is nearly unanimous, well more than two-thirds. We can now move on. We dealt with Article 39 out of order, so we can now move to Article 40.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, I move to, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen following any necessary actions required by law to convey in fee or less than fee at a price to be determined by the Board of Selectmen, if any, to the First Parish Church of Stowe in Acton, parcel of land containing approximately 3,000 plus or minus square feet, and at the junction of Great Road and Common Road identified as within parcel U1069 as shown on the Stowe assessor's map, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into certain agreements to convey said parcel in fee or less than fee on terms deemed by the Board of Selectmen to be in the best interests of the town, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to retain by easement or otherwise a portion of said 3,000 square feet for sidewalk purposes, said sidewalk layout to be determined by the Board of Selectmen, and to oppose as a condition of said conveyance or restriction for the longest period allowed by law protecting from disturbance a large triangular stone that stands approximately three feet tall and two to three feet in width located at or nearby the nuddly corner of the parcel.
We have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends approval of this warrant article. It has very little financial impact on the town, and the parcel of land in question is immediately in front of the church. It has been maintained by the church for a long time.
Is there any further discussion on this article?
Yes. Roy Miller from Brandy Mead Circle. I have a couple of exhibits in support of the article. In support of the article. And the next chart will say, the reason I wanted to say a few words is a couple of people in this room have asked me, where is this triangle? And it's like, where's the clock? So here we are on Great Road, Route 117. Here is Crescent Street, which most of you know that was the main road through town at one time. The next, this is from the assessor's maps. The next one is highlighted with some color coding to show you the Old Town Hall, Randall Library, and the area in blue outline, hit dash line, is the plot plan of the church-owned properties. And this in red is, in fact, that triangle shown there. So with that as orientation, I can show you some photos, a couple of photos. First of all, this would be looking up Common Road from Route 117, and here's a stake I put in the ground, approximate location. That would be the easterly corner. There's a stake behind this tree, we'll see in the next chart, which is this one here, looking back in those two four, this is the base of that triangle. It's about 120 feet long. On the next photo, we see back here in the woods, we see a stake, and that's approximately 50 feet into the woods off of Great Road. And if we expand that out in the view in the next chart, this is, in fact, the boundary marker that is alluded to in the warrant and also in the amended warrant article and is also indexed on various deeds. The next chart, we'll see, this is a theory of how did it happen? How did this little triangle get to be? Well, some of the things that we know is, is that Crescent Street was the main road at one point in time. We know in the 1820s, a group of people bought this particular parcel, which had a hill right in the center, and they moved that land down, forming a good part of the common into that road. We also know that some of the stone walls form, form boundary lines kind of parallel to that, which is sort of parallel to this corner, these lines here, parallel, parallel. So somehow, this little corner got isolated. Great, Great Road in the 20s was modernized and to its, its present form, and we were left with this triangle as it exists. Finally, on the next chart, I suspect that this is a small parcel in size, about 3,000 square feet. It likely became an orphan lot inadvertently. The driveway to the church parsonage has... parsonage has crossed this for well over 100 years. We've spoken to the highway department, and we see no positive, they see no positive value to the town. And this small parcel will give us continuity of the property and allow any subsequent improvements such as parking and access and so forth to use that space. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other questions or comments about this motion?
I have a question. Bill Booth, 14 Evelyn Road. Maybe just that I'm a little thick, but looking at that map, I couldn't quite figure out where the access road to the library is. I see Great Road and I see Crescent Road, but I didn't see that diagonal road that goes past the library. And how is this positioned in relation to that? Are we talking about land on the other side of that access road?
That's, can you see it now? It's called Commons Road.
Okay, so this is on the far side of that Common Road?
It's on the church side of the, yes.
It's not, it's not the grassy area along Great Road. Thank you.
Okay, because this is a conveyance of land, this requires a two-thirds majority. So, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, that is unanimous. We can move on now to Article 41.
Mr. Moderator, I move to rescind the votes taken under Articles 35 and 36 of the Stowe Annual Town Meeting of May 19, 2003, to use Community Preservation Act funds to purchase a certain parcel on Red Acre Road for open space and affordable housing, specifically to see if the town will rescind actions taken under Article 35 to appropriate and transfer $300,000 from the Town Community Preservation Fund, CPF, to purchase open space and return $60,000 to the Stowe CPF Open Space Reserves, and return $240,000 to the Stowe CPF Unreserved Funds, and further to rescind actions taken under Article 36 to appropriate and transfer $100,000 from the Town CPF for affordable housing and return that amount back to the Stowe CPF Unreserved Funds.
Before we get the Finance Committee recommendations, I'm going to defer to Bob Wilber. Would you like to give an overview of CPC in connection with this, or should we get the Finance Committee recommendations on this one?
Question.
Okay, so Finance Committee on this particular article?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. It spends no money. Essentially, it removes an earmark from certain community preservation funds that had been appropriated several years ago for a land purchase. And that land purchase is not going to occur on the terms that were, under which it was appropriated. So this article removes the earmark and frees up those funds for appropriation at a later town meeting.
Are there any other questions about this article?
This, I believe, is the Canilius property, which if you look at a open space plan of Stowe, is a very critical 50 acres in the town. I would like to see this remain reserved, these funds reserved, because I would like to see the town purchase this with a new agreement with, so we can have that open space and some room for affordable housing. We presently have no allocated owned land for significant affordable housing in town.
But let me check for a second with Town Council, because I don't know that money earmarked for a specific purpose could be moved towards another purpose in the future.
We're, essentially, we are, go ahead, sorry.
So will that be in order, or?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, Town Meeting members. The article from 2003 was for a specific purpose, a particular parcel for two specific purposes. So I don't believe, Malcolm, that it would serve the town's purpose to try to reserve these funds under the 2003 article. If Town Meeting at some future date wishes to purchase this property, it certainly can, but it would have to come back to Town Meeting with a separate appropriation and a separate approval either from the CPC, or if it wasn't through the CPC, then directly through Town Meeting. So I would, I would agree with the moderator that the preservation of the funds in this article will not solve the purpose for which I think you seek, which is to purchase this at some later date at some unspecified terms. Town Meeting voted specifically in 2003 for the purchase of this parcel for specific reasons. Those reasons are now, or this particular parcel purchase is no longer available, and it would not be appropriate to try to park the money for a future use.
Well, my argument would be, John, is that it would put these aside. Yes, we need another project, and we would have to come to the town for that project, but these funds would be there to transfer into the new project.
Mr. Moderator, I would, I would just add, and respectfully, Malcolm, I think the safer bet would be to repark the funds back with the CPC. That would be the appropriate funding source. I don't believe that the 2003 article could be used for a future purchase in a different, for a different project, for a different sized parcel. So unless the exact terms of the 2003 article were to revive themselves, the 2003 article has expired.
I understand that, John, but essentially, if we leave them there, they're not going to be used for other things. My argument.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the motion to rescind the Red Acre Purchase Funds and return those monies to the CPC? This requires, on advice of council, a two-thirds majority as well. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, that is nearly unanimous. I count maybe four votes against. Clearly more than two-thirds. Bob Wilber, would you like to make a presentation overview of the CPC? At Town Meeting, we asked Mr. Wilber to, even though we're all veterans, to give us an update on the Community Preservation Committee and its activities, which will help in the articles that are upcoming, the next three or four articles. Thank you, Mr. Wilber.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. All right, next slide, please. I know that the poll earlier in the evening showed that there were no absolute newcomers here, but I will just very briefly, because of that, I will be very brief in terms of describing the Community Preservation Act itself. The Act was approved by the Massachusetts Legislature in the year 2000, and I'll just point out that a lot of other states are beginning to emulate what Massachusetts did 10 years ago here. And the idea was to give communities like Stowe an opportunity to expand their ability in several very important areas. The creation and support of affordable housing, the acquisition and preservation of historic landscapes, and the acquisition and preservation of open space. Included within the open space category is acquisition and development of land for recreational purposes. So just keep that in mind. So those are the restrictions. Those are the only, those are the strings on how those use, funds can be used. Next slide, please. So in terms of looking at where things currently stand in terms of our community preservation funds, we have received just about 2.5 million in state matches since, since we adopted in 2001. We have a total surcharge, that is the amount that's been collected from all of us, of about $2.7 million, and interest in earnings and grant receipts of about $516,000, which is a nice figure as well. The interesting thing that I would point out there is that at this moment in time, 10 years into it, our total amount of CPA funds of $5,746,486, 48% of that is comprised of the funds that came from all of us. The 52% of it is from other sources. And that was really the pitch for CPA itself, was to expand our ability in certain areas. Next slide. We've, over the years, we've used CPA funds, I use the word "we," the legislative body, all of us, Town Meeting. We have improved access at the West School. Also, within historic preservation, we have provided limited funds for securing the blacksmith shop at the time. We've also worked on upgrading stone walls at the Lower Village, and there is an article along those lines in a few minutes. Within affordable housing, we've been very active. We acquired 37 permanent affordability restrictions for $350,000 at Pilot Grove Apartments. And in October 2009, we appropriated $1,750,000 towards the creation of 67 new units at two locations, at the plantation apartments, where there will be supportive housing, and also at the Pilot Grove location. Within open space protection, we've also been very active. What we're looking at in this image here is the Mosley Field, part of the Applefield Farm operation. We, in conjunction and partnership with the state, we acquired an agricultural preservation restriction, similar to a conservation restriction, specifically tailored to encouraging long-term agriculture. That was on the Mosley Project. And the CPA funds, if I remember correctly, on the Mosley Project, we used about $22,000 in CPA funds to attract 10 times that amount in state funds that came to Stowe to create that agricultural preservation restriction. We've also acquired another one on the Tyler Farm, which is also part of the Applefield operation, and the Hale property a couple of years ago. Next slide. Continuing within open space acquisitions or accomplishments for our town, we acquired a really nice stretch of bike trail, a future bike trail along the Assebit River, very, very scenic. The next shot certainly brings that home in terms of what that experience is like, and it's, be a really a wonderful thing as it's, as it exists today and as it may be further developed in the future. Okay. I'm also very pleased to point out that the Stowe Community Park is now open, and I encourage any of you who haven't been there to take, take a ride over there and enjoy it. Any of you who are retired or out of work at the moment, go down there at about 10:30 in the morning and bring your tennis racket with you. It's a great place to be. And we will have some more news on some sort of a community event there in the future. Next slide. Keep going. Okay, here's, here's, if the funds that are in the warrant articles are approved, and the Red Acre Canilius Funds have just been approved, so there's $400,000 in addition that wasn't there previously. We have, we have Article 42, there is $20,000 requested for continued restoration of stone walls at Lower Village, $50,000 for restoration of headstones at cemeteries, and $80,000 for the acquisition of a conservation restriction. Next slide. This is, this is an interesting slide. Deb Seeth put this together. I thank her for that. What this shows is that, that the expenditures, especially between open space and affordable housing, are now very balanced. And as a matter of fact, their exact 49% has been spent on each of those, excuse me, 40% on each of those over the years. Next slide. Unreserved funds by category, with the Canilius, Red Acre rescission that we just did, these figures need to be adjusted somewhat. The, pardon me, the historic will not change at all. Affordable will increase by 100,000. The open space, open space increases by 200, up to 235,000 will be the new total on that. And for, for unreserved, it will go to 212,000. Okay? And this one again shows the articles that are before you and the balances on hand. So I think I'll leave it at that, and we'll go to the next articles.
Okay, thank you.
We have Article 42.
We're on Article 42, so I need a motion on Article 42. Ms. Sturgis?
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate and transfer the sum of $25,000, excuse me, $20,000 or any lesser sum from the Community Preservation Fund Reserve for historic preservation purposes to be expended under the direction of the Cemetery Committee in consultation with the Community Preservation Committee for the reconstruction and rehabilitation of stone walls at the Lower Village Cemetery.
Second. Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval. This money would be used to complete the historic, the rehabilitation of historic stone walls at the Lower Village Cemetery. Since they are CPC funds, they have no direct, the expenditure of them has no direct effect on the tax rate.
Thank you. And Capitol Planning Committee, Ms. Lynch?
Capitol Planning voted unanimously to support this article. I think the feeling was that it, inappropriate project for the use of the CPC funds as historic preservation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the motion under Article 42? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, that is unanimous. Article 43.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate and transfer the sum of $48,000 or any lesser sum from the Community Preservation Fund Reserve for historic preservation purposes in accordance with the provision of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, to be expended under the direction of a cemetery commission in consultation with the Community Preservation Committee for the reconstruction and rehabilitation of headstones and monuments at town cemeteries.
Second. Thank you. Finance Committee, recommendation. Mr. Salvi?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. It will be, the funds will be used to, to repair some of the most damaged headstones at two, I believe, of our cemeteries.
Thank you. And Capitol Planning Committee, Ms. Lynch?
Yes, we approved expenditure, again, an appropriate expenditure for historic preservation.
Are there any questions or comments on Article 43? Mr. Fitzpatrick?
The, this is more than just the Lower Common Cemetery, I presume. My question is, the acetic rain has destroyed or is damaging a lot of the headstones. You know, if you look at the history of headstones, they are slate, marble, and granite, depending on the time. How are we going to store the separating of the slate or the wearing, washing away of the marble? Or, I'm curious, is, how this is going to be done? Or are we going to destroy some historical significance by just letting them be as they are?
Is there someone with expertise on this issue that might be able to answer Mr. Fitzpatrick's question?
Hi, I'm Mike Bush, 25 Peabody Drive. I'm on the CPC, and I've been working with G.H. Gladhill. He's our cemetery superintendent in town for well over a year now, and the project to restore and fix some of the headphone, or headstones. I've been on, mainly it's the Lower Village by Papaginos and Hillside, which is the next, or next younger cemetery, which is in front of, which is on Center Street. And then the newest cemetery is Brookside. So this is mainly affecting, or going to fix urgently needed damaged headstones that in a lot of cases are just lying flat on the back. Mike, could you, Mike Chupinkey?
Mike?
I think I have three slides following Bob Wilber's slides.
Stay close to the microphone, because it's getting difficult to hear. Stay close to the microphone, because it's getting difficult to hear.
The, the ones that are broken in half and flat on their backs or tilting at 45 degrees, where you could step on it and crack it right in half. Less urgent stones, which we'd like to look at down the road, are those that are tilted extremely one way or the other, or forwards and backwards. So when G. H. Gludhill introduced this project to CPC, he wanted to fix all 500 stones that he thought needed fixing. So what we did was we boiled it down to make it be a two-year manageable product, project. He wanted to go for a big five-year project. So some of the stones that are broken in half need to be fixed by craftsmen that do this all the time. There's about five different people between Maine and Connecticut that are good at this, and G. H. Gludhill has been in contact with just about all of them at this point. Severely damaged stones, if they're quite large, could go, could be as, as much as $400 on the average to fix. So it looks like we'd be able to fix 60 stones in the two-year timeframe, some of which would be done by a craftsman, and some of the, some of them G. H. could do, the ones that just have to be reseeded and straightened out. Mike, I think they're further along. Ah, okay, just imagine it.
They're looking for some slides that aren't there.
I think, I think this would, our, our cemeteries are kind of like museums, and it's like reading a history book when you read the stones. One of the pictures, if you can imagine, is a headstone that has a, at the top of it, a skull with two, like angel wings. That one dates back to 1736. That's a long time ago. That's one at Lower Village. And the two I wanted to show you were marble stones, and the marble stones date to late 1700s to the early 1800s, the ones that actually Malcolm was mentioning, that get stained by acid rain, especially when they're laying face up, flat on their back, they just, just, um, so I hope to vote for this. You got it? Yeah. That's actually, that's actually a close-up of, that's, that's the skull face, but it doesn't show the wings. There's a stone right in front of it that, oh, that was from 1600s? Okay.
Well, it would be nice if someone could get Malcolm an answer on that question about, Bob, could, maybe someone on CPC do something about, that's an interesting question, if there's some way to present it. Oh, okay. Do you, can you answer Malcolm's question?
Uh, G. H., the cemetery, Malcolm?
Malcolm, we have an answer for you.
Acid rain will, will, acid rain will affect all the stones eventually. There's not much of protection going on, working with Mount Albans and other cemeteries across the countries. They understand this problem, and as stones age, they will falter. We're only here to protect them for as long as we can. The only other option is to replace them, and at this particular time, we don't have any kind of funds for that.
I guess my question is, and I think it's, I mean, contrary to what the moderator may think, I ask questions because I want to learn something at town meetings. So I'm learning about preservation of tombstones. And I'm all for it, but I just want to know whether I'm spending my, my money on it. And because I've been concerned, especially in the marble they're washing away. But what you're telling me is that you can preserve them in their present state, and they will not, so they will not be further destroyed. Is that right?
We're preserving them as we can, but they will not be, over time, they will be faltering even more, but not at this particular time.
So there's, there's no long-term solution for the?
No.
Destruction?
Right. Nope, no, no cemeteries, no, all stone will, stone will fall apart sooner or later.
Well, I didn't know if you could embed it with, with the preservation material or not.
Okay. Let's continue this offline.
I'll go back to him.
All right. Are there any further questions or comments? So Article 43 is motion to appropriate and transfer 48,000 for the reconstruction and rehabilitation of headstones and monuments. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Article 44.
Mr. Moderator, I move no action on Article 44.
Is there a second? Okay, can you provide a little background as to why we want to move no action tonight?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Kathleen Willis, a member of the Community Preservation Committee. The Historical Commission voted within the last week to move no action on this article. They feel that the historic house inventory that they're currently involved in, they're discovering, is taking more time and diligence than they thought it would, and they felt it prudent not to move forward with another project until that was completed.
Thank you. All those in favor of moving no action on this article, please raise your cards. All those opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Article 45.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate and transfer the sum of $80,000 or any lesser sum from the Community Preservation Fund Reserve for open space preservation purposes to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee for expenses associated with purchasing a conservation restriction on property consisting of two parcels of 30.3 acres, more or less located near Maple Street and Edgehill Roads in Stowe, Middlesex County, Massachusetts. Shown Assessors' Maps are two parcels, 1B and 19A. Such restriction to be recorded at the Middlesex County Registry of Deeds set conservation restriction to limit the use of the land to open space and conservation purposes in perpetuity or for the longest period of time allowed by the law, and to authorize the Community Preservation Committee to pursue, and the Board of Selectment and our Conservation Commission to accept a conservation restriction on said property in accordance with statutory requirements.
Second. Thank you.